I don't know. I think they really don't want to. So we want to hit the sister you stood aside. I mean, just, you know, just kill her. I mean, I'm trying to push that all right.
No, we're not talking about that.
That's why it was good. It was a good one.
You get paid a lot. You pay the mail.
Yeah.
And she got it.
Get word down low.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Oh.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
What's more?
My phone was off the ground. Off the ground.
Sounds like we got her.
Way back.
Have you ever got broken into?
Never.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the St. Charles County Council meeting on Monday, April the 8th. We will begin our meeting with an invocation delivered by Dennis Wilhelm of CPPS Partners and Mission O'Fallon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Joe Brazel. Please stand.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm a lay member, associate member of the Sisters of the Most Precious Blood in O'Fallon. The CPPS is Latin, but anyway, thank you. Good and loving God, we place ourselves in your presence. As we gather here this evening, may we be mindful of the words of St. Paul in his first letter to the Corinthians. There are different kinds of gifts, but the same Spirit. There are different kinds of service, but the same Lord. There are different kinds of working, but the same God works all of them in all people. Now to each one, the manifestation of the Spirit in these various gifts is given for the common good. Help us to accept and respect one another. Let us work in solidarity with all our sisters and brothers, those with whom we agree and those with whom we disagree. Generous God, you freely give each of us uncountable gifts and talents. Help us to be good stewards of these, and by your example, may we generously serve all your people. Amen.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to your Republic for which you stand us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilman Swanson.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman Baker.
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comments. Just a reminder to fill out a speaker's card. We also will limit you to three minutes, and we will usually entertain three, four, and three against if there's that many that would like to speak on a subject.
Bill number 5287, Kelly McConney.
You're up. No. Nope.
Good evening, council. We're Doug and Kelly McConney, co-owners of the business called Broadview Valley, CAG 144 LLC. We're located at 3835 Becker Jorling, which is zoned as agricultural district. On February 8th, 2023, we received conditional use permits for a number of items, including a maximum of seven cottages. The cup that we received specifically defined cottage may reference to Section 405060 of the Unified Development Ordinance for St. Charles County. 405060 defines a cottage as 350 square feet. During sessions in front of this council, as part of the cup process, we discussed cottages of around 200 square feet. We had an opportunity to present in front of you. Once we received the official cups, the wording in the cup stated that we were granted up to 350 square feet based on the definition in 405060. We have engaged and paid for plans for five cottages and submitted them to the county for their review. The engineers and architects that we hired designed cottages that are 280 square feet as they relied on the definition of cottages from 405060 that was specifically referenced in the cup. As part of the review process by the county, we learned that the conditional uses within 405080 in the agricultural district for cottages are limited to 200 square feet. So we are respectfully requesting the council change the language in 405080C11 to conform the definition of cottages to 350 square feet that will be consistent with the general definition of cottages in 405060 that was referenced in our cup, and that's what our engineers and designers had relied on. So we respectfully request that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Regarding the NEC, Lisa Bauer.
Is there a pair of glasses I left laying when I was visiting? No. Okay. I'll have to go with not being able to see.
Hi, thanks, everyone, for allowing me to be here today. I am a single lady who lives in St. Louis County, but I have worked in St. Charles County for 20 years as a jewelry designer and owner of a very tiny, just me, pharmaceutical, very tiny jewelry company, and I sell high-end fashion jewelry and equestrian jewelry. The NEC has been, it was actually the first time I've ever sold in a public forum 20 years ago, and found it to be a great place to find customers. And so now I have customers from all over the country who come in and do the horse shows, and then they come in in the vendor area and buy my product. And it's really great to have a living in which you can use your creativity, so I'm very fortunate for that. However, in the end of last year, I received a letter from the then-director Dana Jensen, who's no longer with the facility, but she was the director, and she said I was no longer welcome there as a vendor. Apparently, I had said something, and so they asked me to not come back. So 20 years of running a virtuous company, meaning I make the product, I guarantee the product, if it breaks, I fix it. It's really hard to hear that because of something I said, and I don't remember anything I said about anyone, no argument. And so now I am, I have damages. The entire month of March, I would have made about $5,000 at the NEC. And I'm able to track this because of past shows I've done over the years, again, 20 years. I actually was friends with Carmen Natoli, the previous owner. He'd come and visit with me at horse shows. So I have approached various people, and I think I made my typing in big enough print, I can see it. I've written letters to Dana, made phone calls to her, physically showed up, and she avoided me for about six weeks. I reached out to the county executive's office, but nobody was there other than Kelly. She was very nice. I've also reached out to Brian Graham. We've had several, I've sent several emails. Andy Fluck has been awesome to me in talking to me, and he sent me to go talk to the new director, Dennis Evans. There's a show starting on Thursday where I'd make about $3,000 or $4,000, which would get me through my next month. I've lived in my home for 25 years. I bought it when I was a pharmaceutical rep, and I'd really not like not to lose it. And the slow turning of government may be the result of me losing it, and that is not hyperbole. So I ask that we look into this and see if we can find a way that maybe even on a trial basis, there are other vendors working as vendors at the NEC currently. So I feel like there's prejudice of some sort, but I don't know what it is.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, you can call me if you want. That's in my district, and I can get with Parks Department, we'll talk it through. Get there in, yeah.
I'll stand.
Yeah.
Lauren? Anyone else?
Regarding naval terms, Brad Hillibrand.
Good evening. A few years ago, I had the pleasure of going to a luncheon where a local resident was very highly touted and congratulated about all the things he did for the county. And one of the interesting things was, he talked about his tough times, the beginning of a business, moving here into St. Louis area, and he talked about naval training. And then when he went through the Navy, in order to graduate from the Navy, from basic training, he had to swim 200 yards. And he explained the reason you have to swim 200 yards is because when you're in the Navy, if the ship starts to sink, you have to get 200 yards away from the ship. Otherwise, you go down with the ship. It sucks you down, okay? Let me come back to that in a minute. Steve Elman and Mike Elam have done a lot with East West Gateway and trying to essentially help out the city of St. Louis. Matter of fact, I felt sorry for Steve because of the fact that at the recent crime summit, he was somewhat made fun of, accused of poaching police officers, which I thinking, you know, poach police officers? Why would anybody want to be police officer in the city? They can come here. Coming back to that, just this morning, I was listening to the radio, and I heard a talk show. A guy came on and said the effect that, matter of fact, he said, "The host told the story about the mayor of St. Louis saying she was going to make St. Louis businesses pay for crime committed on their property." I'm going like, "There's no way. That's fake news." Guess what? I researched it. Here it says right here, "Tough on victims of crime. St. Louis Democrat Mayor blames business owners of their crimes that happen on their property and vows to hold them accountable for lawbreaking." Okay, what does this have to do with anything? The city of St. Louis is a sinking ship, and we should move as far away from the sinking ship as possible. Now, I have a solution, and being a marketing guy, it's a branding solution. Instead of us going around, if we travel somewhere and say, "Where are you from?" You don't say you're from St. Louis. You say you're from the West Plex. Now, you may say, "West Plex? What's that?" According to Wikipedia, if you research St. Charles County under Wikipedia, it says, "West Plex is an area within St. Charles County, east-central Missouri to the west of St. Louis. West Plex is part of the St. Charles County that used to be called the Golden Triangle." Us oldies know about that one. It's formed by I-70 to the north, Missouri 94 to the southeast. Since almost all of the growth in St. Charles County was within the triangle, is dubbed the Golden Triangle of St. Charles County, hence Golden Triangle. Today, the West Plex is made up of St. Charles, St. Peters, Weldon Spring, Cottleville, Darden Prairie, O'Fallon Lake, St. Louis, and Wentzville. I say what we do is we market that we are the West Plex. Not that we're this community to the west of St. Louis, we're the West Plex. And matter of fact, I don't know if you know this or not, if you pulled the West Plex, big old crane came out of the sky, picked up the West Plex, dumped it in the middle of Kansas, we'd be the 47th largest city in the country, between Minneapolis and Tulsa. So I say to you, think West Plex. Think West Plex. I know some of the mayors are going to be happy with that because of the fact that they all have their little areas, and they're proud of that. But once again, naval term as I exit, as the tide rises, so do all boats. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Regarding Kurt Barr, Lacey Burnett.
I've seen reporters on TV do this. I'm not sure I can. Okay. I've been a resident of Darden Prairie for more than 25 years, and St. Charles County for more than 43 years. The fact that I feel compelled to state because some of you conspiracy theorists think protesters are outsiders. I have come to praise Elections Director Kurt Barr. I have been election judge in five elections, and he and his staff have done a terrific job. We are well-trained and get outstanding support. At my last training session, there were 40 people in present, all of them returning judges, and I think that retention speaks to the fine job his office is doing. Before elections, Mr. Barr conducts a town hall meeting for voters, and where they can ask questions about their polling places or any other questions they have about the election. Some officials have criticized Mr. Barr with no evidence of wrongdoing. I'm tired of this constant search for fire where there is no smoke. It's time for the era of baseless conspiracy theories to come to an end. Thank you.
Lauren?
In regards to the Prosecuting Attorney Office and Joe McCullough, Blake Rappert.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Blake Rappert, residing at 4232 Greensboro Drive, proudly representing District 7. I'm actively involved in various community roles, including the Board of Festival of Little Hills, proud member of the Cottleville and Weldon Spring Chamber of Commerce, Vice President of my HOA, volunteering as a youth soccer coach. Additionally, I make it a priority to follow the local government by frequently attending county council meetings online and watching them if I miss them to stay informed. I stand before you, not only as an active member of the community, but also a concerned parent. In 2022, the St. Charles County SWAT team and cybercrime unit conducted a raid on my street, targeting the neighbor's home for possession of child pornography. This incident was particularly alarming to us as I was preparing to take my children to preschool. I believe the use of SWAT team to arrest, this indicates the highlight and highlights the gravity of the situation and concern among the parents on my street. Despite the significant resources allocated for such operation, the outcome was disheartening. The individual in question, a repeat offender, was in possession of 20-plus images and videos of child pornography, received a four-month, received four months of county jail, shock treatment, and five years probation. Again, I share this was a repeat offender. The leniency is appalling and fails to reflect the severity of the SWAT team's operation. The crime must or prioritize the safety of our community's children. I must address former Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, now Judge Larry Crum, who orchestrated this plea deal. His actions are indefensible, and an invasion of accountability is deeply troubling. I must, or we must insist on the integrity and accountability within our judicial system. County Executive Elam, you appointed Joe McCullough with the expectation of a tough stance on crime. However, the outcome of this case falls short of that promise. Now, I did have a civil conversation with Mr. McCullough tonight, and I appreciate his time, honesty, and believe the plea deal was in motion before he took over. Moving forward, I ask for stronger prosecution of child predators. Our children's safety should not be compromised, and it's upon us to demand better. You all built them incredible parks to enjoy. It's time to ask the justice system to step up and check them as well. And I'm not talking about the police, because they're great. In conclusion, I ask that everyone reach out on the council and the executive office to the PA office and ask them to be tough on child crime. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The final speaker.
Final speaker. Okay. Next on our agenda is an oral report from our county executive.
Sorry.
Oh, good. Well, we welcome you. Okay, all right. Go ahead, don't jump in there. Good.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Council, Executive Elman. I would like to take a moment to talk to you about an issue that costs taxpayers millions of dollars each year and what we can do to steal, keep them stealing for good. I'm a representative of Carpenter's Midwestern Regional Council, and we're doing a tax fraud blitz around state and actually our whole region here, make people aware of what's going on, tax issues here. So bear in mind here, and we'll try and get through this real quick. Michael P. Kelce, Professor of Economics in University of Missouri, Kansas City, completed a survey which began in 2020 and was published in March of '23 on the topic of worker misclassification, wage theft, construction industry in Missouri. The survey compiled data from 42 state agencies, expert in the field, to complete the eye-opening report. Employee misclassification is defined as a case where employers treat workers as independent contractors that should otherwise be wage or salaried employees. If an employee is classified as an independent contractor, the employer or the employers are not required to pay a variety of payroll-related taxes, fees, benefits, like social security, taxes, Medicare, taxes, workers' compensation, pensions, and health benefits. It is important to note that we have legitimate independent contractors. The problem is not the presence of legitimate independent contractor firms. The problem is the unscrupulous employers who continue to hire workers but illegally misclassify them as independent contractors to increase their bottom line. Across the state of Missouri, too many employee, employers are not playing by the rules, denying workers these benefit rights. This allows them to save approximately one-third of labor costs by not paying their taxes. Sometimes workers are paid late or only paid a fraction of their hours. Worked employers and worked. Employers who misclassify and refuse to pay their workers legally legitimately make it much harder for legitimate employers who pay by the rules and pay Missouri taxpayers are often left nothing but the bill. One of the most dominant results of this illegal practice is payroll fraud. Payroll fraud is a result of two important factors. Misclassifying employees as independent contractors and paying workers off the books in cash-only arrangements. Payroll fraud defunds the social programs which result in increased unemployment insurance, work comp tax rates on those businesses that play by the rules. It also increases the drain on other income-supporting programs which the public sector and the state must pay. Survey totals from 2020 are as follows, and as much worse today. 21% of 31,000 workers in the construction industry who are misclassified are working off the books in the state of Missouri. Using income of $50,000, probably being lucrative at that, these 31,000 workers would cost employers engaged in worker misclassification around $465 million in wages, benefits, and contribution to social industry insurances programs. Missouri unemployment insurance programs had a shortfall of $28 million in the construction industry alone.
Thank you, sir. We get the three minutes.
You want me to pull out of this?
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, but let's you get my gist. We've got a lot of stats on this, but this is very crucial, and with these last two hailstorms, Wentzville last year and this one in O'Fallon, they are fly-by-night storm chasers, and your county's not going to get a dime out of them but sodas and sandwiches. And that's what's here, and they're talking millions of dollars of damages in O'Fallon. And yeah, this is very detrimental to our county, and you guys always try and balance the budget, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Final speaker.
Right. Now we move on to an oral report from our county executive.
Mr. Chairman, the county executive for the West Plex was not intending to give a report today, but since one of our well-known and well-respected journalists from the West Plex has mentioned the escapades of Mr. Elam and I down East West Gateway, I think I probably ought to elucidate.
Sure.
Elucidate a bit on those facts. And Mike and I, of course, at the last East West Gateway meeting, what we were responding to was this regional summit, which the mayor of St. Louis asked for about a year ago. And they brought in a guy named Thomas Apt, who wrote a book called Bleeding Out. I read the book. The book said, "You need to approach crime from two directions. You need the traditional approach, okay, and you need to do it better with more cooperation, with more police officers." But at the same time, he believes you should hire social workers or people who will go ahead and contact potential criminals and try to get them to go straight. He would require a police officer to accompany that social worker, which again takes a police officer off the streets and puts him in this meeting. We did not question, although I had my doubts, we did not question the whole social worker thing. What we questioned is the fact that 95% of this effort by the city and the county and others was being directed towards the latter rather than the former. And we were just trying to make sure that if you're going to do this stuff with social workers, well, first you need to make sure that if it doesn't work, there's police officers to do the job. So I offered an amendment, which simply said, and of course, we can't tell the city what to do, but we were creating this collaborative that was going to do all this, and we could tell them what to do. And what we told them is you can't hire a social worker until the city hires 10 cops. And the mayor and others just thought that was terrible. The president of the Board of Aldermen, Megan Green, inquired of me and said, "Do you think that cops are 10 times more important than social workers?" And I said, "No, but I think we need 10 times as many cops as social workers." And she started talking about, "Well, I think they're more, you know, they're more even." And I said, "Fine. If I can get your support." I asked the mayor, "Madam Chair, would you send my amendment back?" I sent a second amendment, which simply said, "It's all you got to do is hire one cop to hire a social worker." And asked for the vote, and guess what? She voted against it, as did the majority, lost that vote as well. So the fact of the matter is that, you know, whatever else you're going to do, they need more police officers in the city. And the poacher-in-chief, who's sitting in the, who's sitting in the last row back there, of course, the mayor accused him of poaching police officers. And I didn't think we were doing that, but when I got back to the office, I called him. And the fact of the matter is, we do not go to recruit in the colleges in the St. Louis region. We go to Columbia, to Mizzou, we go to Springfield, Missouri, for Missouri State, and we go to Champaign-Urbana in Illinois. But we don't even recruit in this area. We figure people in this area, if they want to be a police officer, they know, they know where they want to go. So that accusation is totally untrue, and we're not poachers, and we do care about the city, not only because of the tragedies of all these murders, but because it reflects on the entire region, and we need to get the region going. Thank you to that journalist sitting over there, and thank you to the council for hearing me out on this.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed as is. Next up are bills for final passage, beginning with bill number 5280.
Bill number 5280, an ordinance approving a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Peters for reconstruction and improvement of Spencer Road.
Questions or comments on bill 5280? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5280, an ordinance approving a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Peters for reconstruction and improvement of Spencer Road. Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 5280 has passed. Next up is bill number 5281.
Bill number 5281, an ordinance approving a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Darden Prairie for reconstruction and improvement of Stump Road.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5281, an ordinance approving a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Darden Prairie for reconstruction and improvement of Stump Road. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 5281 has passed. Next up is bill number 5282.
Bill number 5282, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Park and Recreation District, doing business as the Great Rivers Greenway District, to transfer ownership of a piece of property adjacent to Heritage Park at no cost to St. Charles County.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5282, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Park and Recreation District, doing business as the Great Rivers Greenway District, to transfer ownership of a piece of property adjacent to Heritage Park at no cost to St. Charles County. Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Bill number 5282 has passed. Next up is bill number 5283.
Bill number 5283, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Duckett Creek Sanitary District to connect Kinetic Park to sanitary sewer mains, sanitary sewer main appurtenances, and treatment facilities for the disposal of sanitary sewage as part of Phase 1 improvements at Kinetic Park.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5283, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Duckett Creek Sanitary District to connect Kinetic Park to sanitary sewer mains, sanitary sewer main appurtenances, and treatment facilities for the disposal of sanitary sewage as part of Phase 1 improvements at Kinetic Park. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 5283 has passed. Bill number 5284 is up next.
Bill number 5284, an ordinance Bill number 5284, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement to provide administrative support, procurement, and management services for certain improvements to Klondike Park between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the St. Charles County Port Authority.
Questions or comments on 5284? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5284, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement to provide administrative support, procurement, and management services for certain improvements to Klondike Park between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the St. Charles County Port Authority. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 5284 has passed. Next is bill number 5285.
Bill number 5285, an ordinance amending Section 135.360, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding purchase approval authority provisions.
I got a motion for a substitute bill.
This was based on the conversation we had at the last meeting. This takes out street work, equipment, cars, things that are more just, you know, equipment objects and stuff, and it includes computer programs, consulting, things like that where we have more of a conversation on, where it has greater implication countywide. And as long as there's two qualified bids on the other items I measured before, that it could go on the consent agenda. And so that's what the substitute is.
Okay, Mr. Brazel has made a substitute, introduced substitute bill number 5285.
I'll second that.
There is a second? Okay. Will there have any discussion here on the substitute bill?
Well, I just, I'm sorry, Mike, did you want to say?
Nope.
No, I was just going to say, because at the last meeting, what, we had some conversations about it, and it was that $700,000 consent item on voting machines and other things, maintenance and everything. And what some of the council members and the county executives said, that if somebody had, if someone asked to table it, then we'll just simply table it. Well, on this particular issue, I was in Hawaii on a business trip, and Councilman Baker did make a motion. He explained that there's questions on this, and Councilman Brazel would like to have some questions on it. He asked for a table, and there was some conversation, and Matt Swanson, I viewed the tape, Matt asked some really good questions, really hard questions, and I didn't feel they were properly answered by the director. However, it still went to a vote, the council refused to table it, and it went through. So that's why I think this is important. It doesn't matter if our council members don't agree on certain issues, it's just the respect of the office. And so I would, that's why I would like to have this ordinance in place, because I think that when we're passing all these items that are over $100,000, there's not enough conversation. And I feel that the general public needs to be notified as well, because when it comes up on the consent agenda on a Friday, and it's a million-dollar project, it should have two readings so the general public can have some input as well and be able to know what's going on. And that's what we're missing, is we're not giving enough conversation for these big-ticket items. And if the council wants to get more involved, if they have any wherewithal in agreeing a little bit with this, then maybe we could talk it through and have a work session on it. But I just think we need to do something different, because I just don't think it's working fairly for the general public.
Any other discussion? Okay, the first thing we need to do is...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yeah, we had quite a bit, I thought, with good discussion about this last time. I guess we continue to have concerns just about the additional time it's going to take on bills that may not be controversial at all. Did not remember the example from January. I do know at one point, we did have to ask several years ago for you, because we made the mistake of waiting to the last minute to bring it forward. We're going to try never to do that again. This bill is better than the previous, the substitute's better than the previous, but it doesn't really solve the problem. Joanne has some numbers, can I have her?
Certainly.
We took the amended bill, and we asked finance to go through. Before that, about 115 additional ordinances a year looked like they would go through with the change that you made for the lawn, sorry, glasses on, glasses off, sorry, lawn maintenance vehicles, the construction equipment. It would cut it down to, assuming that everything in those categories hit at least two bidders, it would cut it down to about 70 to 75 bills a year that we add because of that. And several of those, as you looked at things, they would be like the Microsoft license agreements, the Genetiv license agreements, all those things where we've made a commitment to a particular source, but we have to run those through on the annual contracts through you all. None of that's accepted. So, and some of those are large numbers, I'll admit. Microsoft is kind of the large vendor in the game these days, you know, so there's not much you can do about it. And we do negotiate those to the best governmental contracts available. But you're looking at doing ordinances, and it would be, as you know, any ordinance that's under three pages has to be fully read. So just be mindful, it adds five days plus the two weeks or three weeks, like April, there's three weeks between meetings, to those contracts. And in addition to that, it's going to add quite a bit to your agendas, so.
Well, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Joanne. I mean, I'd agree to table it if the council wanted to put more input into it, because with some of the stuff that you're talking about, I agree with that. I just didn't know how, I mean, Mr. Baker looked at it, and he wanted consulting in there, because we're, you know, it's, I think when it has bigger, greater implications throughout the county, like different kind of information systems, things like that, where it's not just a contract that we're renewing every year. I agree with those things, but I didn't necessarily know how to word it all, because it's a little more complicated than that. So if there's a better way to do it, I'm just trying to get to a point where we're passing two and three and four million dollar consent agenda items, which is just not, I don't think that's really good business for the constituents, because they're not seeing what we're doing, and it needs to be a little more transparent. So if there's a better idea that you would, the staff would think, okay, I can understand this perspective, or I agree with this because of this, but I don't agree with the other ones, well, I'd be more than happy to entertain any kind of language, but I haven't received anything. I haven't asked for it either, so it's not, you know, but I think if, I think there's some room that we could try to make more of a compromise if that's what you guys would like to do. But I do think we need to do something. Otherwise, we can just vote it down, but at least I'm trying to do something that's a little more transparent.
Well, and as you know, when we approached the rehabilitation of the third and fifth floor and corrections, you and I had a significant conversation, and you expressed some concern about the bidding to the trades. And so we negotiated that we would do Parry's General Contract, and then we would come back to you as we had the bidders on the fifth floor, and then we'll come back to you again on the third floor. And that was on tonight, as you know. And we fully laid out the history of that and all of that. I think some of those larger ones, we've been trying to have those conversations in advance so that the council knows what's coming up. And obviously, the rehabilitation of, and the renovation of corrections is one of the biggest projects we'll undertake on the campus. But, so, I mean, I understand that you, on those very large contracts, you'd like a lot of information about those, and we've been trying to work very hard on that one to make sure that we're regularly updating council on that as things go through.
Mr. Chairman, I don't like getting these things two days before we have to send them downstairs either. So, I mean, if you table this or vote it down, whatever, I still will make a commitment to try to get those big items to me quicker, so we can get them to you quicker.
Maybe we, if we change the rule to get it to us on a Monday, instead of on the Monday before, a week before the council meeting, as opposed to the Friday at 3:00. I mean, I think that's, well, that's the biggest issue, is we're getting these $3 million contracts on a Friday at 3:00, and, you know, well, who's really working a lot on Fridays at 3:00?
That means, if you do it Monday, it means I need to get them the prior Monday, and I'll only have one day. So, you know, I mean, I agree that maybe one day isn't enough, probably not enough sometimes for me, but I've got people that I could immediately call in and ask questions, that you all don't have that ability. So, so again, you know, I think everybody can agree that there's a reasonable way to address this without, without overdoing it.
I mean, do we want to table it for further discussions? Is that, is that kind of what the thinking is? I mean, I think Joe and I, we, I think you all know what our intent is. You know, we're getting these big contracts on Friday that we want, we'd like to have a little bit more time to understand before we're asked to vote on it on the following Monday.
Yeah, I mean, after that discussion last week, I noticed that we had, what, four or five really large items on this, on this consent agenda.
The micro-surfacing contract was on.
And I, you know, I called Joanne in, I sat down, I mean, you know, there was just this complaint about, I said, do we really have to go with all these at the same time? And are they all really necessary? And, you know, after talking to her, I agreed that, yeah, we should send them to you, and apparently you all didn't have a problem with them because you approved them. So there's a, there's a way to do this without creating longer meetings, without, you know, imposing on anybody to do something that they don't have time to do.
Meeting length is not my concern, just...
Yeah, I... Mr. Hammond, go ahead.
You know, if there's an item that somebody needs more time on, I don't have a problem tableing it, you know, or seconding any motion to table. So if it's not broken, I don't think you need to fix it, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I was going to say, it sounds like that Steve, the administration, thinks there could be some room to compromise. I think that it's something that we could talk about. I'd be willing, I'd like to make a motion to table this and see what else. I don't want to, you know, and we're all busy, so I don't want to create a burden on the staff or on us or anything else. But like Tim says, getting the stuff on a Friday at 3:00, you know, we don't want to work on the weekends and have to read all this stuff, and there was a lot of stuff today. And so it's just, I think it's reasonable to think that we could have a little more time, whether it's we back it up to a Wednesday or a Thursday, or whether we do this. It's got to be something. And so I'll make a motion to table this and work it through a little bit longer.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to table of bill number 5285. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, bill number 5285 has been tabled, and we'll continue to work to some kind of, kind of resolve. Okay, last up for bills for final passage is bill number 5286.
Bill number 5286, an ordinance authorizing the non-binding projected tax rates of the county for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the County of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2024, in order to develop the notice of projected tax liability to accompany the assessor's notice of assessed value, all as mandated by Senate Bill 711-2008.
Okay, questions or comments on 5286? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5286, an ordinance authorizing the non-binding projected tax rates of the county for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the County of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2024, in order to develop the notice of projected tax liability to accompany the assessor's notice of assessed value, all as mandated by Senate Bill 711-2008. Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, bill 5286 has passed. Now we start with bills for introduction, beginning with bill number 5287.
Bill number 5287, requested by Joe Brazel and Dave Hammond, an ordinance amending Section 405.060 regarding the definitions related to camping, camping cabin, cottage, and dwelling, and Section 405.080 of the Unified Development Ordinances of St. Charles County, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding conditional uses in agricultural districts.
Okay, questions or comments?
Yeah, just quick, so we didn't know there was a problem, and they were trying to get their permit, and there were some hiccups. And so we had a meeting with Mike and Robert and Brian Wees, and McConys came in, and everybody was in there, and they're very helpful. And I don't think that they understood the hiccup either, because the McConys, when they came to us, said their plan showed a 200-square-foot cabin, but it said 350, so then they drew them at 280. And so we had to put this line in here to adjust it, because this is, they're the first ones to get, do this, with this new camping, agricultural camping district, or whatever you call it, with the cabins. And they're the first ones to do this. And so, so Mike and Robert and Brian Wees, they're the ones that were very helpful, and they said, just do this change, and that should make it work. And so that's what they kind of came up with a solution, so that's it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mike or Robert a question about this? I guess I don't understand, what controls the conditional use permit or the statute? I mean, can't you, doesn't a conditional use permit make it clear they can do what they want to do?
So, yeah, sure. So the way I understand it is the CUP tried to amend the zoning code requirements, and that was not allowed to be, to do, be done that way. So it further, the agricultural district...
So is that something we should have caught and not done it?
Yes. Yes, the ordinance was amended, it was a substitute bill that was brought forward at the last meeting. And that amendment, that substitute changed it.
The conditional use doesn't, isn't broad enough to include that, that other definition?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh, I'm good with the change.
Yeah, I, again, when these folks came forward, I remember their original proposal, I was impressed with it, they really did a great job, and, you know, I'm kind of sorry that we ended up with this, this problem, but obviously, I think there's a way to correct it, and we can move forward. Okay, any other questions? Okay, next up for introduction, bill number 5288.
Bill number 5288, requested by Lori Myers, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to the state wage interchange system.
Okay, any questions on bill 5288? Seeing none, we'll move on to bill 5289.
Bill number 5289, requested by Lori Myers, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development to receive $40,000 of Wagner-Piser funds.
Okay, questions, comments on 5289? Seeing none, we'll move on to bill number 5290.
Bill number 5290, requested by Joseph McCullough, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the St. Charles County Prosecuting Attorney's Office to execute documents for receipt of grant funds in the amount of $146,441.54 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety under the 2024-2025 Stop Violence Against Women Act.
Questions or comments on bill number 5290? Seeing none, we move on to bill number 5291.
Bill number 5291, requested by Chief Kirk Fraz, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri concerning the personnel administration plan and amending the 2024 budget adopted by Ordinance 23-104 for the creation of a full-time position entitled "Police Recruit" to be added to the current positions of employment in the St. Charles County Police Department.
Questions or comments on 5291? Seeing none, we move on to the final bill for introduction, 5292.
Bill number 5292, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance amending Section 160.030 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri relating to extending the maximum age of a municipal judge within the county's municipal court to be consistent with Missouri statute.
Questions or comments on 5292?
Yeah, I do. Yes, does this affect any current judges that are going to take advantage of this change in law, or?
It could, yeah.
Do we know of any that want to?
Judge Brad is going to turn 70.
Who?
Our judge in the municipal court, Judge Brad, is going to turn 70. And again, they've changed the statute.
They did.
Which allows, allows him to serve up to 75 under the state statute.
Okay.
But when you all passed the ordinance, it was, the old number was 70, so our ordinances basically have the old number.
Judge Fager is going to stay on?
Huh?
Is Fager is going to stay on?
Different judge.
Fager's, no.
He's state?
This is, yeah, the state judges still have 70, which seems awfully young to me.
Yeah.
And maybe a couple others up there. This is, yeah, the state judges still have 70, which seems awfully young to me.
Yeah.
And maybe a couple others up there. But, yeah, the state changed to 75, and we're just now using the same number everybody else in the state is using, if you pass it.
Okay, that concludes our bills for introduction. Any announcements or miscellaneous?
Terry?
Yes.
First off, I want to, I want to thank Councilman Elman for his representation at the crime summit, I thought, watching that video, I thought you represented St. Charles County well, and I appreciate that. I think we recognize, and at least you do, you recognize that crime and things that happen in St. Louis City affects the region, and I thank you. Along that line, I just want to bring up that, I think I've talked to a few people up here, there's a lot of trash in our county, just coming back from visiting other cities, Phoenix, Sarasota, it's kind of embarrassing. And I just like, as a community, as a council, as prosecutors here, as maybe we're talking judges, everybody, is there a way we can look at, maybe like a work release, or, as opposed to, I know we have a problem with our jails, but given the option of letting, letting people clean our streets and clean up trash, maybe parks or something, not highways, I understand the liability issue, but something to actually give us a benefit to the county as opposed to just having them sit in, sit in the county jail. I mean, you know, maybe it's a rhetorical question for us to think about as a body, but I think something needs to be done.
Councilman, here's the biggest problem we've got, is that if they're pre-trial, the 13th Amendment, judges nodding yes, prevents us from doing that. This morning, we, so a year ago, we had 381 people in the jail on this day, this morning we had 451. So, if I had a way of getting out of there, but 435 of those are pre-trial.
That means they're, they're.
They haven't been to trial.
Well, I mean, then, I mean, other areas are doing this, so, I mean, you know, this, we're not, we're not splitting the atom here.
I think, I may be wrong, but I think other areas are doing it with people who've been convicted.
And that's what I'm saying, if someone gets a DWI.
See, once they're convicted, we ship them to the prison.
Well, we're not.
Even for like a code violation, like a county violation, like a DWI, or whatever that, I mean, you're not.
Misdemeanor, they serve in the county jail.
Okay, misdemeanors, then.
Yeah, we could have some misdemeanors, I guess.
That's what I'm talking about, instead of.
Right, and we've got 15.
I mean, we've got, we've got a jail that's, we have a.
And some of those have health problems, you know, I was just talking with the first assistant tonight, that we need to meet with them, because we have some real health problems amongst folks who are in the jail. So, there's a variety of problems, but we can certainly explore what we could do with those 15. Frankly, we're already trying to use them in-house to like help serve meals, and prepare food, and that type of thing.
That's great, but, I mean, but, we see the trash in our county, and there's a lot of it. I mean, you know, take St. Louis City out of it, I mean, that's appalling, and actually kind of embarrassing, but like, like crime, crime in St. Louis brings the whole region down. I think the filth from St. Louis City and the county, and the trash that's along the streets, that brings the region down. And if there's something that we could do as a county, maybe thinking outside the box, someone that's been sitting in a jail doing and serving meals is great, but something that we can, the citizens can get a benefit of, I think would be even better, but.
In a, in a state of Missouri, we, we're the first state in the country that, we train prisoners in the corrections in Missouri, and we certify them in roofing, and give them safety, and we buy them, when they graduate, we guarantee a job, 100% prevailing way, junior job, and, and they do the roofs for the prison. So, there's, that's a way, but you're right, they're convicted, so, I don't know how they would work that out, but it's a good program, because it gives, we call it Elevate, and so, we elevate these people to getting good jobs and benefits, and we get them an apartment, we buy them a car. So, it's really a good program. I don't know how we could work that out through the county, but try to.
We could talk more about it.
I would appreciate that, and again, thank you for the crime.